Do you need this?
Yes, he will need that.
Five seconds.
Good evening. My name is Pat Rockenberg and I've been proud to serve as the mayor of Mount Airy for the past five years. On behalf of the town council, the citizens of Mount Airy, I would like to welcome you to your town hall for this evening's candidate forum. I'd like to thank the Carroll County Media Center for being here this evening and filming this live. I'd also like to thank the candidates, moderator Bill Butts, most importantly, you the citizens of Mount Airy. Replays of tonight's forum will take place on cable channel nineteen tomorrow, Wednesday at eight AM, Friday at eight PM, Sunday at six PM. And with that said, I wish all the candidates well. I wish you good luck. I want to thank you very much for hoping to serve our town. Some of you once again, some of you for the first time. I appreciate your willingness to serve and I will now turn this forum over to Bill Butts.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to begin by clarifying that this event tonight is a candidate forum rather than a debate. The purpose is to enable each of our candidates running for the three council positions to state their positions, both in general, as well as in response to specific questions that we've received prior to this event and we hope that we'll also receive during the format tonight. Each candidate will have the opportunity to speak to each of these questions. An equal time will be provided to all of the candidates. This structured approach, rather than a debate format, we feel is more appropriate and beneficial to our residents, our voters, and to the candidates. Index cards are also available in your chairs for audience members to submit a question and we urge you to do so, okay? If you need more than one, I think there's some more at the back and we may need to share pins out there. But the whole purpose is to enable you to ask questions that are on your mind. In the event that there are several of the same ones, I'll simply try to combine them. But when you have written out a question, simply raise it up and someone will come and pick it up and they'll bring it up to me. I will work those in to the questioning. The questions that each of the candidates will be asked are a combination of what residents have submitted and then I have some backup ones in case if they are needed, okay? So we're going to start by asking each of the candidates to first introduce themselves and we're going to start with Jason over here on my left and we'll ask each candidate in turn, tell us a little bit about your background, how long you've been a resident, and your community involvement. And I think we need to share this as we go around.
Good evening. My name's Jason Poyer. I've been a town resident for eight years, moving from Baltimore County and then turned Howard County. My profession is I am an elementary school teacher for Howard County Public Schools, for which I've been a educator for fifteen years, teaching grades four and five. My community involvement so far has been limited. However, my need to be involved is growing each year that I am a resident here in Mount Airy. I see the possibilities, the really good things that the town has to offer, and I want the ability to provide my residents, my neighbors, the opportunity to voice their opinions and have a voice for their neighborhoods to the town council directly. I feel that our small town will continue to be a small town. I don't see any need for moving here. I saw a small town, we like that. And coming here for eight years, developing a family, being married, having two kids, playing sports, being involved with the town, has really developed the love that I have for Mount Airy.
All right, Mr. King.
Hi, my name is Bob King. I'm a twenty-three-year resident of the town of Mount Airy, a relative newcomer compared to most of you sitting out there. I have coached and was the president of the Mount Airy Youth Athletic Association. I served for fifteen years on Parks and Recs, on the Mount Airy Board of Parks and Recs, for eight years as the chair. I'm an active member at Calvary United Methodist Church where I usher, teach confirmation, and I'm a key person in a benefit golf tournament that we hold every year. I recently received a fellowship in local governance from the School of Public Policy at the University of Maryland in College Park. And in March, I was inducted into the Mount Airy Historical Society's Hall of Fame, all of these great honors. I'm running for reelection to the town council because our vision of a Mount Airy with a vibrant downtown, a rail-to-trail system connecting all of our neighborhoods, and an appropriate-sized community center is not done. Addressing our water deficiency and the cost of public safety will be important discussions this year that I wish to participate in. So thank you for the opportunity to serve.
All right. Hi, welcome. My name is Peter Helt. I'm an attorney. I practice here on Main Street. My office is actually about a block and a half from town hall, so I'm here on an everyday basis. Lived in town for twenty-one years, been married to my wife Tammy for thirty years. We've raised two children in this town. I've served on the town council for twelve years at this point. I've served on the Parks Board over those years, the Streets and Roads Commission. I've served on the Beautification Commission. I've been involved in a lot of things that have gone on in this town. I've really appreciated the opportunity to serve this town over the last twelve years. I really look forward to the opportunities that we have in the future. There's a lot of great things happening here and I look forward to being able to participate in those.
Hello, my name's Chris Everett and first thanks to the mayor and to Mr. Butts for the forum this evening and welcome to the candidates. I'm sure we'll have a productive forum this evening. I believe this evening you'll see more of a discussion rather than a forum. I say that because most of the candidates this evening agree in principle about the issues that are important to us in the town. While we may differ on some of the details, you'll likely see most of us agree on the direction the town's moving towards. I also believe that it'd be more of a discussion because the incumbents present this evening are moving the tower, the town, forward in a safe, positive, conservative direction. In parts of our democracy, the political process seems to be broken, gridlocked, a lot of us will say. And many voters rightly believe that throwing out the incumbents is the answer. I believe this evening you'll see at least three incumbents sitting here who've kept their prior campaign promises, who are working together to move the town forward, again, in a positive direction. I've lived in town for seventeen years. I began my service to the town some ten years ago, at a time when poorly thought-out growth policies were destroying the very fabric of what we thought was special here in Mount Airy. Controlling irresponsible growth is my concern then, it's my concern today. So first, I volunteered and was appointed to the town's planning commission. I served there for six years, two years as its chairman. I was elected to my first term for town council three years ago, and in the past, I also served or filled out a term for a council member who had left. As a council member, I also serve on the Water and Sewer Commission, Planning Commission, and the Community Center Task Force. My community involvement includes nine years as a mayor soccer coach, committee chair of Cub Scout PAC 460 at Calvary United Methodist Church. I'm a committee member of Boy Scout Troop 460 and a merit badge counselor. I also advise the project Lead the Way Engineering students in the Carroll County High Schools and I serve as a judge in the Maryland Science Olympia. I hold a BSCE from University of South Florida, a master's from Hopkins, and a master's from George Washington. Professionally, I'm an Enterprise Solutions Architect for a Fortune 20 company with twenty-nine years of experience. Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to go around the table and we're going to ask each of the candidates, starting with Councilman King, to share their opening statement.
Thank you very much and thank you all for coming here. The town of Mount Airy has, it's a great place to live. Being a part of this community means so much to me and sitting on this council, being able to listen, listen to the citizens, is just, I guess it's just what I'm all about. I don't like a lot of personal accolades. It's not what I do for me, but it's what we do together as a community. We have the Rails to Trails program and Larry Hushour from Parks and Recs has really taken that and made something of it. We have a long ways to go. We have the Flatiron Building that there's going to be some discussion as to how we're going to save it. We're having discussions now about an appropriate-sized community center. And I'm just, I love being a part of this town and talking with you. I'm walking around knocking on doors and talking with people about what's important to them. So just make sure you come to the firehouse or to the Activities Building on May the fourth and vote. And, you know, vote for whoever you choose, but just vote. Thank you very much.
Okay.
We're going to go this way? Okay.
Opening statement, Peter.
Sure. Welcome to the candidate forum and I want to thank you here for your interest in our town. I've had the privilege to serve you for the last twelve years on the council, the last six of those as council president. When deciding how to cast your vote, there's one thing I want you to consider. Has the town done a good job of providing the necessary services to you such as water, snow removal, trash collection, sewer service? If we have, then I think I've done my job. I've made sure that we give you the best possible services and since I've been in office, our property taxes have gone down over seventeen percent. I stand for a small, efficient government, one that provides what you really need, not what someone else thinks you should want. I fought to see that our town does not become another big tax, large government like so many others. I believe the town government should provide the necessary governmental services with excellence and stay out of other areas. Every service we add costs you money. Westminster's tax rate is fifty-six cents per hundred, ours is sixteen point nine five cents. That means a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house in Mount Airy, I'm sorry, three-hundred-thousand-dollar house in Westminster pays sixteen-hundred-and-eighty dollars in taxes. That same house in Mount Airy pays five-hundred-and-eight dollars and fifty cents. That's a really nice big screen TV or a couple months' worth of car payments that the government's taking from you. I think you would rather to choose to spend your money where you want rather than have the government decide where to spend it. I know I would rather have the money. We also have money in the bank to cover any emergencies or any contingencies. I'm not sure what more we could do as far as that's concerned. This says to me that this council and this mayor have a proven track record of doing things right. Please keep that in mind when you go to the ballot.
Okay. Mr. Everett, opening statement?
So this evening, as we go through the different questions that are asked of the candidates, ask yourself, as the candidate asks questions coming from the audience, especially ones we've not seen before, does the candidate show you the knowledge, show you the experience, that they're able to understand the issue and understand how to carry forth on that? And then ask yourself, has the candidate put forth a viable plan to achieve the goal or the question that's been asked? Everybody is for something, but knowing how to get there is the key. And you'll find me this evening agreeing a lot with Peter Helt and with Bob King. A lot of the success, the forward direction that the town's moving, I believe I've also played a small part, you know, part of the team. Folks seem very, very happy about the direction that we're moving in. There are some things that I'm concerned about, and especially in the financial area. While we have very, very strong reserves, one of the things that I'm concerned about, and I continue to work, is how do we afford a community center? How do we afford more Rails to Trails? How do we afford some of the amenities we want? One of the things that you'll hear me perhaps say over and over again this evening is, we need the town to set a reserve policy. We have no reserve policy, meaning how much money do we set aside in a rainy day fund? How much money do we set aside as an operating budget? In other words, ebbs and flows of revenues and expenses on our checking account. Once we do that, then we'll have a baseline to understand what we can do for the Flatiron Building, for the Rails to Trails Building, all without raising taxes. I think that's a very, very important thing moving forward in the next four years. Thank you.
Okay. Jason, your opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for coming again tonight. I don't disagree with the councilmen tonight that my experience is not as high as theirs, but the last time I checked, there is no degree in college that you can get for a councilman. Experience comes in many different ways. Being involved with the town, I coach T-ball, does that give me any more experience than being a soccer coach? I talk with my neighbors, discuss the issues that's going on with the town. To me, that's being involved. I care about what the town is doing. Coming to budget meetings, coming to the town council meetings, you can learn a lot by attending those meetings. It doesn't mean that you have any less experience than any of us up here trying to run for town council. Listening to neighbors, putting your voice forward and representing the residents of Mount Airy is the experience that you need to have to be a councilman. I have done a lot in eight years, being involved with my family, taking part in swim team with Mount Airy Nottingham. Also, thinking about who is running for town council and where is the voice being heard from. There is a large neighborhood, neighborhoods that are not necessarily being represented on town council right now, and it's hard for those neighbors to get their voice heard. I'm here to not only represent them, but also the residents of Mount Airy so that it's more equal and beneficial for the town. Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to shift into questions that have been submitted by residents, all right? And the first one in that regard concerns law and order and public safety. And Mr. Helt, you'll have the first opportunity to respond to this and again, we'll go in the same direction we've done before. What are the advantages of maintaining the present state trooper arrangement versus the advantage of shifting over to our own local police force? Which approach do you favor going forward and what impact do you see negative or positive on the safety and well-being of our residents with that preference?
Thanks, Bill. I really don't see, at this point, any benefit to keeping the resident trooper program. So that makes it pretty clear that I fall on the side of moving to a town program. At one time, the resident trooper program was very good because it was fairly inexpensive and we had troopers who were here for long-term. We had one sergeant who was here for eighteen years. We got community policing from those troopers. Now, a trooper, if a trooper's here for a year, year and a half, that's a long time. They're constantly being rotated in and out. I think that affects public safety. The troopers who are here, they don't know this town. They don't know what's going on. I can remember calling up our old troopers and telling them something, they'd go, "I know who that is," and I'll go knock on his door and tell him, "You better cut that out." We don't have that anymore, okay? We need to get back to community policing. I also think we can have a lot more police officers, at least everything we've seen shows us we can have a lot more police officers for the same amount of money. The state has just been ratcheting up the dollars. We anticipate it very rapidly getting, I mean, it's getting close to a million now for five troopers. If you just run those dollars, that's an incredible amount of money. So I think we would do better getting our own troopers in here. We'd have our own police chief so when we need somebody to actually go out and patrol your neighborhood. If there's somebody in your neighborhood that there's something special going on, we need to put a trooper there, we can do that then. With the state troopers as we have it now, the control was very decentralized. There is one trooper in Westminster who, in theory, oversees things, but he doesn't directly oversee the troopers that are here on the ground. So it's a very disorganized system. It didn't used to be that way. So the state has changed the system, which is why I don't think it's any more beneficial to us. I am in favor of moving towards a town system.
Okay. Councilman Everett, do I need to repeat the question?
No, I'm good, thank you. So you'll probably hear me say this a lot tonight. I agree with what Peter said completely. I'll give you a few additional details. For this year, the state troopers will cost us nine-hundred thousand dollars. That's two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars per trooper since we only have five. Next year, the cost goes up to a million dollars. That's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per trooper. Now, in addition to the cost, which has become no longer sustainable, some of the things I really do worry about is the coverage. One of the things we don't like to advertise on council is, probably ten percent of the time, maybe on occasion more, maybe on occasion less, we have no coverage. If the trooper arrests someone, takes them up to the Westminster barracks to book them, they have to drive up there, book the suspect, and drive back. We may not have a trooper present in town. We'll take an example of the neighborhood of Nottingham. There've been one or two cases where Nottingham, somebody in Nottingham, has called for assistance and they've taken up to twenty-five or thirty minutes to arrive. It's just not acceptable. So the costs have become unsustainable. As Peter has said, the community policing aspect now has fallen down. And while the troopers are highly trained and highly professional, as Peter said, if we move to our own police force, I think after the startup costs are taken care of, then we will be able to actually either reduce our costs or perhaps even reduce our costs and increase our coverage. We can put more police officers on the street, police officers who live here perhaps, who are familiar with the area. I think it's the right thing to do. The mayor and the council, they've already put forty thousand dollars in next year's budget to begin hiring perhaps a police captain, and we actually have a plan to do this. What we would do perhaps is hire one local policeman and get rid of a trooper. Next year, hire one or two more local policemen and age out a trooper. So we actually have a plan in place to do it. I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Jason's turn.
This little thing we're passing around shocks you if you take over two minutes.
I'm okay then. All right. In discussing the police advantages, I am in favor of hiring a local police force. And there are several reasons that have already been mentioned, but the most important reason for that is so that the police officers get to know the residents and can do a more effective job than the town, sorry, the resident state trooper program. Mr. Everett mentioned that Nottingham was having some difficulty. By the time a police officer is called, they are simply not doing the job effectively that the community is looking for. They are driving through, there's no real effort being put into stopping the vandalism, stopping the theft that people are experiencing in garages. People are coming into open garages and stealing whatever it is that they're doing. By the time that state trooper is called, it is taking too long. If we have our own community police force, the four or five that we're going to have starting out will be centrally localized within this town, possibly at the Flatiron Building. That being centrally located, that police officer will take no longer than two to three minutes to reach your house as opposed to twenty-five to thirty minutes for that state trooper. Mr. Everett also mentioned if they need to book someone, they're taking them all the way up to Westminster. Last time I drove to Westminster, it took about forty-five minutes. So, thank you.
Thank you. And guys, all of these are great points. I am probably the last lone brought into this subject kicking and screaming. I like the Maryland State Police. I think they have an advantage. In Mount Airy, you can be driving up one side of, driving up the hill in Main Street and be in one county, and when you return home on the other side, you're in another county. I'm concerned about the jurisdictional issues that the Maryland State Police don't have to deal with. They can go anywhere in the state of Maryland. Having said that, when Councilman Everett, Councilman Helt, and I were elected three years ago, the cost for the Maryland State Trooper, Resident Trooper Program was five-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand dollars, okay? As you've been told, this year, we're expecting to spend nine-hundred-thousand dollars. Next year, that projected figure is a million dollars. That's a lot of money. And what we've been seeing is, just as far as being a community police department and just emailing citizens back when they email a problem to the police, we've tried over and over and over to get them just to let the citizen know that they got the email and they're checking it out. And then there's the issue of, you know, on any given night, you can call the Maryland State Police, you end up getting the Westminster barracks, and so you have a response time of about an hour, you know, to get here to a resident in Twin Ridge or something along. If somebody's breaking into your house, you don't say, "Hey, hold up, let's wait an hour." You know, the cops will be here then. So I'm being dragged kicking and screaming. I still think the resident trooper program has some benefits, but I think the money and the response to our citizens is going to drive it away. And we'll have that conversation in the next, in our next term, in whoever's next term. Thank you.
All right. Okay, now we're going to shift to economic development. Both the 2008 Town Survey and the 2012 Community Needs Assessment revealed residents' desire for more support for existing local businesses, more local consumer choices as a result of additional small to moderate-sized businesses as well. More recently, however, the reaction has shifted to a concern over the amount of currently vacant local commercial space. How does Mount Airy fill its currently empty commercial space and become a place where businesses want to be and they're able to succeed and stay open? And we begin with Mr. Everett.
Thank you. So, as we approached the problem, I've already tried to do a few things and I've tried to do a few things in a concrete manner. For example, one of the things to try to kickstart downtown, to try to get the rail yard and some of the projects here moving, would be economic development. We've talked about this for years, but frankly, we've done maybe very little against that. So a few months ago, working with the town attorney in the planning department, what I tried to do was refund the tap fees. So when you bring a business to town, when you connect up to the water and sewer system, you pay eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. And then for each connection after that, you'll pay another four thousand dollars. The rail yard, for example, is supposed to be mixed residential condos and apartments and businesses down below. One of the things I tried to do in the downtown zone was get the tap fees refunded because frankly, right now, we don't need the money. Unfortunately, due to legal issues with our charter and Maryland State law, we can't do that. So I moved to the next step. Last month, I went up to see our Carroll County Commissioner, Richard Rothschild, and said, "Richard, I think it's time for us really to get serious in downtown Mount Airy and to help us do some stuff down here." Immediately, Commissioner Rothschild gave me the names and the contacts of some economic development folks within Carroll County. So if I'm elected, one of the first things I will do is reach out to the contacts that I already have within Carroll County and we'll try to do some real and substantial, you know, growth and incentives down here. Commissioner Rothschild tells me that the county Economic Development Department, along with the state, can help us with grants. If you bring new jobs in, you get tax credits. They perhaps can help us with other grants as well. So that's a real, solid, concrete plan that I'm already moving forward on. I ask for your vote and to continue to serve you as councilperson because I will move out on that plan and actually make things happen down here. Thank you.
All right.
See, it's action. Thank you. In addressing economic growth, the only way that you're going to develop that is by getting people to come to downtown Mount Airy. And one of the ways that we can get people to come is by beautifying downtown Mount Airy. There are some areas in downtown Mount Airy that can use a little beautification. The Flatiron Building, for example, the town purchased that nearly seventy years ago for the sole purpose of destruction, like to destroy it. And to this day, seventy years later, it's still there, not rejuvenated. And the hillside, coming up from the east side, that hill, doesn't, how are you supposed to get people to come when downtown Mount Airy looks like that hill, right? So if we can beautify the downtown area, people will want to come and stay and enjoy. We are able to renovate Flatiron, put in some seating areas, picnic areas, people stay longer. When people stay longer, they're able to spend some money in the town. That's how we get more people. When more people come, then more businesses will start to see that. They will then start to want to find new businesses, take up some local areas that are currently vacant. Bringing in the caboose downtown Mount Airy, that will also bring residents and outsiders to come and see. to come and see another attraction that we have to offer. Parking will then be an issue. The council's working on that.
Not me.
But the council's trying to work on that. But hopefully, I will be able to address that issue as well.
I'm the liaison to the Economic Development Commission, and we're working on several things. The focus over the last couple of years has been on downtown, and we still, that's what our recently approved master plan calls for us to do is focus on downtown. But we have businesses all over this town that need our assistance. So, on economic development, we're not only trying to focus on the downtown by hiring a Main Street manager, by doing some, trying to do some things like short or long-term low-interest loans that are part of the Public Works Agreement when, say, people have to move a telephone pole in order to bring it into compliance with current Mount Airy standards. Right next to the Bank of America, up on Ridge Avenue, I think, well, up on 144, there's the next, the building, the property right after the Bank of America is, they've had a site plan in front of the Planning Commission. They have to move two telephone poles. They cost, we're not sure about the cost, but it's about $20,000 or $30,000 each to move those poles. Maybe what we could do to try to help these people out is give them a long-term, low-interest loan that's part of their Public Works Agreement. We're also discussing with Chris the things of not refunding the tap fees, but maybe doing the same thing with them where you pay that initial $18,000, and then as each property comes online, you pay the $4,000 so you're not having to spend, you know, quarter of a million, half a million dollars before they even put a shovel in the ground. So economic development is really trying to help all the businesses in the town with a focus on Main Street.
Okay.
Goes to Jason?
No. Goes to me. All right. Thanks. Well, when it comes to governments supporting economic development, I really think that the number-one priority in government when dealing with business is to stay out of their way and not to interfere with them. Now, that being said, I think Mount Airy does a pretty decent job of that. Our taxes are low, we try and take care of zoning issues that are problems. We have improved things recently, and we're working right now on a new sign ordinance. I don't think any of you have any clue what it takes to get a new sign put up when you try and open a business in this town. From my perspective, it's almost ridiculous. So we're working on a new sign ordinance so that when somebody wants to put something up, they can actually get a sign. Because unless you can put up a sign, it's really kind of hard to open your business. I know what it's like to be here in town. I'm actually a small business owner in town. My law practice is here on Main Street. I'm also a commercial property owner in that I own the building that my office is in and lease it to another business as well as my farm. It's never been hard to deal with the town. The town is good to deal with. We are working on a few direct projects. For example, we're working on the rail trail to bring it so that everybody can walk into this downtown from each side of town. I can tell you from having ridden rail trails and walked rail trails around the state, when you build them, they do come. If you go out on a nice day to one of the rail trails around here, it's packed. That's going to bring people through the downtown, eating in our restaurants, doing everything else, plus it benefits all the citizens they can get here. Another thing is we've worked with both MAMSA and the Beautification Commission to try and spruce things up down here. Things can always be improved, but we can only do so much. We can't go onto someone else's property and make them clean it up. All we can do is encourage them. The Main Street Association's been good at getting grants to improve facades and do things like that. You'll see planters with plants, just the other night, we were talking about putting new plants out on Main Street. So we are trying to fix things up, and we're trying to stay out of the way of government, and I can see my time's up. Thanks. Okay. All right. Okay, let's shift the pace a bit. State, county, and local issues and decisions that impact Mount Airy's citizens are sometimes not communicated well until it's too late for input or inclusion in the decision process. Senior citizens may not always have internet access or cable TV for town impacts that indeed may well affect them. What can you do to make sure that citizens that will be impacted by a particular issue are well-informed and have an opportunity to comment? And Jason, we get to start with you.
Thank you. Not only affecting the senior citizens, as he mentioned, but also some other areas of town that are not necessarily senior citizens, just regular town residents, I feel, are lacking the necessarily, sorry, excuse me, the necessary communication from the council or from the local government. As far as trying to increase their knowledge, there does need to be a give and take. I feel that the town does a good job of notifying when town council meetings are being held as well as budget meetings in which citizens can come. However, we do need to do a better job so that citizens and residents of the town can understand all of the issues. And the council and possibly a communication, I don't want to say grant, but something working with, like the Mount Airy Messenger, for example, in which every resident in the town receives, could possibly set up something where there is a posted agenda, a short little line item where this is the issue that's being discussed, or this was what was discussed, and how we can communicate that better. I don't necessarily feel at the need that the town starts sending mailings through postage because that's going to cost the town, obviously, postage money. So if we are able to work with the local Mount Airy Messenger, which is already free, maybe we can reimburse them in some way or another, but that is one way that we can communicate with every single resident in the town without having to necessarily come to a meeting and be well-informed.
I think the answer to communication is spending a lot of time in the community. Last, I think last year, we were sending out a new recycle brochure to all the citizens of Mount Airy. And in talking with Melissa Hoyle and a few of the other town staff, we thought it'd be great if we could put a newsletter in there and try to do this newsletter two or three times a year to inform the citizens what each one of our volunteer commissions is doing right now. So, you know, that's a way that we're trying to communicate. I also like to get out in the community and talk to people. When we were discussing the downtown, and you remember how downtown was torn up forever? We've forgotten it now that it's paved. But we were sitting here discussing at council meetings what the downtown business owners wanted. So, one Saturday morning, I walked down here and I asked everybody, you know, you've got three options: do it during the daytime, do it during the nighttime, or do it 24 hours a day to get it over with as quick as possible. And we got the input from the downtown business owners so that we could make the right decision there because they were the most affected by the construction downtown. So, you know, I think it's a matter of just getting out in the community. Ken Phibus and I regularly attend God's Kitchen at Calvary on Thursday nights. There's a lot of seniors that are there, and we get an opportunity to talk to them, one-on-one. And it's a really great way to get your information, is knock on your door, shake your hand, and ask your opinion.
Well, you know, I will say honestly, I think the town is doing a better job of this than we used to. Certainly, there's always room for improvement, and I'm willing to listen to people as far as what we can do. But if you've looked over the last few years, for example, it was kind of hard to miss those giant yellow signs around town whenever a property was up for rezoning. You know, that's put there for a reason. If something near you is being rezoned, we actually do do a mailing. You'll get mailings that'll say that. You know, the newspapers are out there. But there's two newspapers that go through this town that are free, both of which cover pretty well what's going on, all the council meetings and everything else that's going on. Just at our last meeting, we were discussing putting in sidewalks in a particular development. Well, we decided that we were going to hold off on voting to do the sidewalks because we instructed town staff, send everybody a letter first. We want to hear what those people have to say about how that sidewalk's going to affect them and the fact that they're going to eventually have to take over responsibility for paying for replacement of those sidewalks. So I think we're doing a pretty good job of that, but there is some level of citizen responsibility. You know, we can't knock on every door. We're all out in the community, all right? And everybody who's on the council is in a different community, we all are in different groups. We're going to pretty much hear what's going on. We do want to hear from citizens. We have a council meeting, we have 15 minutes at the beginning where you can come and tell us what you think. People come in and tell us all kinds of things. So, from the question of how we can do a better job, you know, I think we're trying to do a better job. We're doing more mailings, we posted a lot more signs with the zoning changes this time. I'm willing to listen about how we can improve that in the future, but I think we're doing a pretty good job of that. So, you know, I would say that's one area we're doing well. I think that's you, Chris.
Thanks. So, one of the ways to communicate well, and I'll give you a personal anecdote too, is to be available. So first of all, every single email ever sent to me, I answer. I always follow up to make sure that whatever the request was gets taken care of. The town website is a very, very good source of information. We do our best to try to post information up there. Being out and about in the town, really, really important. For example, when I was working on the Rails to Trails with my kids, I learned a lot from folks who had concerns about that. The other night, in a scout meeting, for example, one of the scout's mothers said, "Hey, during this last snowstorm, the guys knocked over my mailbox and they haven't replaced it yet. Oh, that's okay, we'll take care of it right away." So, a lot of personal contact is very important. The personal anecdote I'll give you is when I'm walking around town or in a restaurant, inevitably, somebody will come up and say hi to me, and they have an issue they want to discuss. And I can't tell you how many times my kids will look at me, tug at my coat, and say, "Come on, Dad, let's go, it's time to..." But that, again, is part of your responsibility as a councilperson. One thing that's coming that no one's discussed yet is Carroll County has an initiative to run fiber. So, there is a project, you can get a lot of information, I think, from Carroll County about the county-wide fiber project. Unfortunately, I am employed by a very large telecommunications carriers, so ethics dictates that I recuse myself from that. So I do mention the fiber project as something that, if you're interested, ask some of the other council members or other people in town, and they can give you some details on the fiber project. Unfortunately, I cannot due to, you know, ethical and competitive concerns. But again, it's the personal contact that I think is really, really important to answer emails and listen to what folks are saying around town.
And that was a question from one of our audience members, a senior citizen. Glad to have it. Let me remind you, if you do want to submit a question, just write it out on one of the index cards and raise it up, and they'll bring it up. And there's one over here. Okay. This is going to be a question about human services. Within the past two years, there's been noteworthy progress locally in several areas, including an impressive debut by the newly-formed Mount Airy Arts Alliance, significant progress on Rails to Trails and repurposing a vintage caboose into a downtown visitor center, growing support to revitalize and better utilize the Flatiron Building and its location, and a growing interest and desire for a local community center. If elected, do you support these type of enhancement projects for the town and their potential benefit for our community? And in that regard, what are your recommendations for funding and for their ongoing operations? Let me start with you, sir.
Well, once again, we're back to Larry Hushour and the wonderful job that he's done with Mackenzie, who will be, I think will find a permanent home downtown here in July or something like that. I'm a huge supporter of the Arts Alliance and of doing something with the Flatiron Building. I don't think we know exactly what form that's going to take yet. We have a community center task force that's out there trying to help us to decide just exactly what a community center will look like in downtown Mount Airy. Will it be a rec center? Are we going to have basketball courts? Or are we going to have a cultural center? And so the community center task force is trying to work through those things. But yes, I am in support of the Arts Alliance. They've done a huge, huge thing here. A lot of programs going on all the time, a lot of teachings, teaching people how to paint, a lot of those types of programs, plus art shows, music, music in downtown Mount Airy all year, last year on the summer Saturday nights, I believe it was. So, I think that we can afford, as a town, to spend a little bit of money and time for cultural enhancement, and that's all.
It's coming this way, I think.
I get confused.
Okay. Well, that's a fairly large question. The Arts Alliance, I've been supportive of that all the way along. I've even, you know, tended their fundraisers and eaten their food, and we should have more of those kind, by the way.
Yeah, Peter likes his free food events.
So, you know, I've definitely been in support of the Arts Alliance. You know, I think government funding of something like that needs to be fairly limited. I think you really need to look to get that up and standing on its own so we're not draining tax dollars. As far as the Rails to Trails project, I've been very supportive of that. I see that really as a public safety issue. This is not a walkable, bike-rideable town for children. It's terrible to try and get through this town if you've got children or for anybody to get around this town. So, the goal is to have a type of system where we can get all through the town on trails, and your kid can get on his bike in one neighborhood and ride to visit his friend in another neighborhood without having to ride down Main Street, which is really not safe. Having done it, it's not safe. So I see that as a public safety issue. So that's why I clearly support getting the Rails to Trails project up. And we have put town funding into that, but the volunteers are doing a great job. As far as the Flatiron Building, I support redoing the Flatiron Building, not tearing it down. My perspective is, we're going to have to fix the Flatiron Building. I'm going to, you know, I'm kind of waiting to see what the community task force comes back with, but at least initially, at this point, I'm leaning towards the fact that we should gut the Flatiron Building, build onto it going up the hill, because we have to spend the money on the Flatiron Building anyway, and put whatever community center slash, you know, art center that we're going to build there in that space. I don't want to see the Flatiron Building come down, I want to see the work done here in the downtown, and we have to spend the money there. Let's kill two birds with one stone and spend all the money there. Now, that being said, that may change when I've read the full task force thing. I'm still waiting on that. Chris?
Great, thank you, Peter. I'll claim to be an original plank owner of the Rails to Trails as well as my children. A plank owner is the term that Larry Hushour, the volunteer who's put this all together, uses for those who originally worked on the first segment. So clearly, I support Rails to Trails. I've been out there, my kids have been out there trying to make it happen. And again, my thanks to Larry Hushour, Diane Martin, Dr. O'Brien, and others who've done a splendid job. Again, when I emphasize, how are you going to reach the goal? I'm a member of the council liaison to the community center task force. I asked for that appointment from the mayor because, again, it's something I'm very, very interested in. But I'm trying to balance the needs of the community center task force with responsible fiscal management. So, again, one of the things I've done, and one of the things I will propose if elected, I've met, again, with Carroll County officials. I've discovered that if we reform the Mount Airy Recreation Council under the auspices of Carroll County, that gives us free, and I repeat the word, free, access to the schools. We'll be third in the level of priorities. Schools first, PTAs the second. So the third level would be the Mount Airy Rec Council. That gives us access to the gym, to performance space for arts, the classrooms. Again, it's free to us. So my concept would be that we start to build our own recreation programs using the schools for free over a period of time as the program grows, then we can start to look at perhaps a space of our own. Again, we have to balance the needs against, you know, raising your taxes. So my proposal, and I know it will work because I've already talked to the county, the county will support it, is we can start to do this for free. And I think that's a... And I think that's a real, real plus for us. The community center task force has identified a whole series of needs. I've made the suggestion already to the task force. It was well received. So if I'm elected, expect to see us move forward in that direction, I hope. We can get the community center, we can do it for free. Thank you.
Okay. Please.
Well, as a father of a five-year-old and a two-year-old, there's no way that I would not be for any of these things. These are services that community residents of all ages can enjoy and bring people together. With the Arts Alliance and becoming a part of the town, having a line item in the budget, bringing the caboose down to Main Street as a museum, as an artifact, something that stands for our town, and as a visitation center, kids can learn about that stuff that they wouldn't normally get a chance to learn about. With the Rails to Trails, even taking the walk with Larry the other day and seeing some artifacts from the 1900s along the way, kids can learn about that stuff. The Flatiron Building needs to be renovated. When I mentioned the, about the destruction, that's what it says on the PowerPoint, I'm just quoting. I do think it needs to be renovated. It allows for a community center, community residents to gather a place to, on a beautiful evening such as tonight, sit out at a picnic table and enjoy just some talking time in your town. The community center has some positives, it has some negatives. The council, the task force will probably be mentioning those negatives. Who's going to watch the building when, you know, kids are using it? Who's responsible for it? Do we need to pay these volunteers, so on and so forth? I support all of those ideas. As far as recommendations, I do think we need to move slowly on those. We can't afford all of those things, obviously. And I've heard the mayor talk several times that the amount of money that the town has in reserves can cover for a disaster to Mount Airy. Water, sewer, power, electrical, those types of things. We need to keep those things in mind as we plan forward. Moving forward, we need to still renovate, beautify, but also keep the budget in mind. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to shift gears and take a question that one of our audience members has submitted, and it concerns Mount Airy's medical and clinical facilities. And here's the question. Do you think that medical and clinical facilities are adequate, that is, local facilities are adequate to meet the needs of Mount Airy's residents? What can town government do to enhance our medical services, especially with respect to special expertise like geriatrics, internal medicine, pediatrics? Peter?
Got to me? Well, town really doesn't control what goes into its spaces. I mean, that's not a choice we have. That being said, in order to draw more of these services in here, you're going to have to increase your population. You know, a specialty is not going to come in unless you increase your population, which I don't think is anything we really want. You know, the town does pursue these things as best we can by making zoning available to these services. We have low taxes, which they like. You know, are our medical services adequate for a town of our size? We probably have fairly good services. I know that we're looking at a substantial expansion planned in the FMH Center up here, moving over to the other side. Apparently going to build a much larger facility, which will bring in more services. I think that's great. I think the town needs to do everything it can to support that, make the transition smooth, zone it appropriately. Anything we can do to bring them in here, they're businesses, all right? It's a business that would be coming to town. Anything we can do to help them is great, but as a town government, that's not something we control. You know, in order for a business to come here, there has to be a profit margin in it for them, okay? How do we make it profitable for them, okay? The only way we could really do that is by increasing our population, which I really don't think we want to do. So from that perspective, you know, I think we're doing what we can do. We're greasing the skids as best we can, but I think that's about the most we can do.
Great, thanks, Peter. Two particular things I'll bring up as far as healthcare in the community. Number one, the old Safeway building. Carroll Community Hospital, they have a very, very large project that's due to go in there. I believe it's outpatient surgery and care such as that. The project's already approved. It's been delayed approximately a year. We're not exactly sure why it's been delayed, but it's still on track. We know it's still on track. So in the near future, expect to see where the old Safeway complexes, the empty storefronts... Thank you, SuperFresh. The old SuperFresh, that's, yep, I don't shop.
They're getting rid of Safeway?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, because I don't go shopping. The old SuperFresh Shopping Center. So that's one thing. As far as what can we do to improve that? Again, my expertise, if I have, the greatest expertise I have within town government is on the planning commission. So again, six years as a planning commission member, two years as its chair, and now I'm the liaison. I always make sure the planning commission and the planning commission staff does everything it can to use the regulations to help business. Never use our regulations to hurt business. Our regulations for zoning and planning and signage are there to protect the town, to protect the citizens, but you got to make sure that we use them to help businesses come in. The second thing I'll bring up, there is the potential for the Harrison-Lisher property. This is the potential of the town annexing land for a business park. And actually, last night, I was working on the zoning for that particular piece of property if we annex it. A hospital is one of the uses. So in theory, if the town citizens would like to annex the Harrison-Lisher property, the business park, a hospital center could be built there, and it would be very, very well-controlled and to the advantage. So those are two concrete things I think we can do. Number one, we make sure the regulations don't chase businesses away. The SuperFresh example is one. Harrison-Lisher for a hospital center is another. Thank you.
Okay.
As far as addressing the medical needs to the residents, we are a small town with very limited residents. As Mr. Helt mentioned, in order to bring in additional, I think the idea of having more population is something that will need to attract those types of medical services. In saying that, our town is located very close to larger areas such as Frederick, New Market, Howard County. We are not far away from those larger services that our residents may need. Also in saying that, if there is an emergency, our local Mount Airy Fire and Paramedic Department does a great job in addressing those needs for our residents. Being right down the road, they can reach our town residents very, very quickly. We can annex any land we want, but we cannot necessarily control what businesses go into that area. We can say, yes, this can be for development, but what comes in, unless it's specifically cited for medical development, we can't control those businesses that come. And if they don't see the need for growth, remember, they have to make a profit too. And if there's not enough residents to support them, then they're not going to come to our town to then support our residents.
Well, everybody's taking all the thunder, okay? We have right now, we have an immediate care in the FMH building, okay? And we're supposed to be getting a limited version of Carroll County Hospital in the SuperFresh building. I think they're looking to do sort of the same thing that an immediate care does and maybe some small outpatient surgeries and that kind of stuff here on the local level. We also, Carroll County pays about $300,000 a year to the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company to keep 24-hour EMTs there. So that's another avenue we have towards, you know, emergency care and that type of stuff. I think everybody wants to see the Carroll County Center come. We're a little bit disappointed that it's taken so long, but there's not really a whole lot of information coming to us about what's taking so long. And we were pretty excited when they said they were going to move here. So, you know, we have some things that are going now with the immediate care and with the fire company and their EMTs are all the time. And Carroll County Hospital will eventually come to the SuperFresh.
Good. Good. Well, I've got to ask about water. We just have to. Historically, water capacity and effectively managing our local resources have been challenging issues for our community and many others in the immediate area. It just happens to be the geology of the area. In your opinion, what initiatives should the town take to identify and secure additional water resources that are adequate to support the town's planned development? And I think, Peter?
I thought it was Chris.
Is it Chris's?
You went first last time.
I went first.
All right, it's Chris. You're right. Thanks for keeping me honest. All right, good.
I hate going first, that's why I remembered.
I can't keep straight with different Safeway subway.
We're doing it.
So, water capacity. One of the first things I did when I was elected was became the council liaison to the Water and Sewer Commission. And while it took me a year, here's an accomplishment that I'm very proud of. As the town's water, rates for water have increased, and they increased so that the Water and Sewer Department breaks even. It does break even now. As the rates increase and as people buy more efficient appliances, the actual consumption has gone down. We're short of water for economic development. So one of the first things I'm very, very proud of that I accomplished was working through the Water Commission and the council. I found an extra 60,000 gallons of water, all right? Didn't have to change anything. It was, our consumption was down, and I proved it. And I put the 60,000 gallons of water into use. Now, the other thing I'm very proud of is we passed an ordinance to protect that 60,000 gallons instead of a developer coming in, grabbing it all and building houses. We passed an ordinance and all of that water right now is going for commercial redevelopment. And that's an accomplishment I'm very, very proud of. I promised to control residential growth. I promised to help business development. And that was a very key factor. Again, it didn't cost us anything. Now, moving forward, we are short of water for all of the infill projects that we'd like to accomplish. So, one of the suggestions we have on the table, and there was a discussion here last week, is that the town explored acquiring some property just outside of town. If we did that, there would be sufficient water to basically finish off the town. The ultimate stop here in town is the capacity of our sewage treatment plant. Sewage treatment plant's rated for 1.2 million gallons a day. So that's the ultimate cap. So if we go outside of town, acquire a piece of land with water, that will essentially take us to the point where no more development can occur in town. That water can be used for further infill and further commercial development. Thank you.
For water, the town has enough water now. However, if we are looking to expand commercially, the town is going to need more water. That's going to require looking for wells, making sure that sewer lines are put into place appropriately. Trying to attract that development, we need to make sure that we have enough water for that future expansion, excuse me. In order to do that, we need to make sure that our capacity for the water towers is sufficient, and also making sure that the water towers are up to code for where they are at where it's safe to keep water in them. Right now, the council is working on trying to get one of the towers currently repainted due to some logistics with the current paint. So making sure that things are safe where we have water right now is a priority, but also making sure that we have enough water later on for future development, whether it be Center Street, whether it be for downtown Main Street, or some of the Harrison-Lisher property out on 808 or 144. Making sure that we have those needs in reserve will allow commercial development and bringing more economic development to Main Street and Mount Airy. Thank you.
I am the current liaison to the Water and Sewer Commission. Our chairman, Dick Swanson, you may have heard of him. We've been pushing for just about a year now to get some consideration as to finding a water source, you know, on a side of town that needs, that is able to support a water source, but finding an outside source of water, because we do have an honest deficit in what our master plan does. There's not enough water to finish all the infill, to build all of the Center Street and the rail yard and all of these things. So what we would like to do is just get a piece, just get some water and hold it in reserve. Buy some property on a contingent contract that the water pumps X number of gallons a day, or that the well would pump that much. We've had some pushback, but after a summit meeting we had here that developed during the budget process, I think most of the council's in agreement that we need to investigate another water source. What we'd like to do is we'd like to not be beholden to Carroll County because of the Harrison-Lisher water. We'd like to take that off the table so that the Harrison-Lisher is base, or it's rated, or it's not, the water doesn't mean anything. The water doesn't mean that much to us that the actual property and what we want to do there is what'll sell that project. We need water, and I think the council's pretty much in consensus that we're going to go find some.
All right, let me give a quick explanation of our water history. Basically, what happens is the state rates our wells. They come out and give you a number. We have 11 production wells, very good wells. The state comes out and says, okay, well number one, you can take 80,000 gallons a day out of that well. And the town was basically building out to our well capacity. We were going to have a reserve of about 10%. And then about 10 years ago, the state changed its system for rating wells. So whereas we had wells that the state was saying in round numbers, okay, you can take a million gallons a day out of your wells. That was what the state was saying. Then all of a sudden, the state came back to the town and said, oh, we've changed the system. Now you can only take 800,000 gallons of water a day out of your wells. We're like, so you're taking water away from us? That's how we got to the problem we're in. We have projects here on Main Street that are waiting for water to move forward. We do not have enough water in town to currently build out all the lots in town. I'm not talking about building more land or annexing anything, just allowing everybody who owns a lot already in town to get the water they need to build on it. That's our priority. We are looking at the Harrison-Lisher property to see if we can get some water there. Unfortunately, we're limited in where we can go. The state divides everything up into aquifers, so we can't just drill a well. The state has determined that we've already put too many holes in the ground around the town. They're worried that if we put another well, we're just taking it from the well next door. So we have to start looking further out. So it is becoming a real serious issue. We are very limited in where we can drill. It's not a matter of, oh, let's just go drill a hole over here because if we find water in it, the state will say, you've already tapped that water source, you have to go elsewhere. So I am actively in favor of finding more water. We're actively looking for the water, but it's not an easy thing to do. We have done a good job of working with the state to increase those allotments. Chris has done a great job with that, and my time's up. And I think I was last, right? Back to you.
Okay, we've talked in different terms about growth and development, but I'm going to join them together for a question of comparison. The two terms, growth and development, are often used interchangeably when actually they can be very, very different. Growth referring to simply getting bigger, as in a quantitative measure. Development, in contrast, referring to evolving or getting better, a qualitative measure, if you will. With regard to Mount Airy's growth and development, what are your preferences and how do those compare, in your opinion, with the majority of town residents? And I think, Jason, maybe your turn to start it off.
Yeah, I went first last time.
Yeah.
It's amazing how you...
So, growth versus development?
For growth and development, one of the important aspects is to remember that we are a small town. People moved here for the small-town feel. They love it here. So, growing needs to focus on the economic side and not necessarily the residential side. Evolving is talking about having what we already have and making it better. Beautifying the town, filling up those lots that we already have of empty stores, mentioned Super Fresh, putting something there. How long has that been empty for? And trying to figure out, how can we attract new businesses? What are we doing with the rail yard? How can we make this town attract the businesses that our residents need without necessarily developing and taking up the small-town feel that our residents love? People move here to this town because of the voices that the residents are sharing. I can't, I can't even explain how many times a day I love Mount Airy. Where do you live? I live in Carroll County. Oh, what area? Mount Airy. And I can speak for hours just about how lovely it is that people I don't even know wave to me and I wave back. I say hi. They see me in the store. They hold the door. We love our town. We need to keep it that way. So, growing bigger economically, yes, but not necessarily residentially. We need to keep our small-town feel. We need to develop what we already have available for our commercial residents per se, small business owners.
This is, this is something that we discuss pretty frequently in, in the, in, in the- God, here we go. This is, this is something, that was something that we- Yeah, this is something that we discuss pretty regularly in the Economic Development Commission. Pardon me. We, we all are members of, of a, an organization called MML, the Maryland Municipal League. And the Maryland Municipal League recommends that you try to keep your commercial versus residential development at about 18% commercial or 18% business. Right now, the town of Mount Airy is at about 10%. What, what happens, you as residents use the money that, in your property tax that goes to the town. You basically use that up when you use the parks, when our, when our streets are plowed, and, and in all the ways like that. The businesses, when they contribute, they don't use the money up, because they plow their own lots. They have their own trash pickup. And they don't, they don't use your parks and, and those types of things. So, what we have to do is we try, have to try to encourage business development through, through incentives like we were discussing earlier with the, you know, some of, some of the water tap fees about, you know, long-term, sh- long-term low-interest rate loans to the businesses.
Alright. Growth and development. I think as a practical matter, we're pretty much done growing. Even if we were to find more water, our sewer system has a limit of 1.2 million gallons a day on it. Alright? And that's a pretty much, that's pretty much a hard cap, just from an economic perspective. The price of updating that system is so expensive that it's just not something we're going to go beyond. So, that really pretty much takes growth off the table, other than growth of property that's already here in town. And there are actually, if you check, we, we actually have a schedule here in town. There are quite a few lots in town that are still available to be built. Alright? We, we want to build those out. As far as development, that's really fixing and improving what we already have here in town. I think we need to do that. I think we do a pretty decent job of it, at least as good a job as we can. One of the things we need to do is get more water for the businesses. We are now structuring things so that water goes to business, so when, when, when we get a few extra gallons here or there, it doesn't get sucked up by a house. A business can come in and get it. We're trying to come up with good zoning, so that businesses want to be in these zones. From a purely financial perspective, commercial is where to go. They pay the highest taxes and they use the lowest resources. Okay? If you look at your house and you look at the amount of taxes you pay for your house, I mean, I can tell you just my house alone. I probably don't pay enough in property taxes to repave my road every 20 years when it needs to be repaved in front of my house. Our property taxes are cheap. A commercial property, high value, you know, usually there's only a little piece of road in front of it, whereas a house has a big piece of road in front of it. Commercial property has a small piece of road. Commercial properties often don't use as much water. For example, my office. How much water do we use? Virtually none. They don't, they don't impact your schools. They don't impact your services. So, as far as growth, I need, think we need more commercial growth. Chris?
Thanks, Peter. As far as growth, first of all, I don't believe we need to get bigger. In fact, the reason why I started out, the Planning Commission, one of the reasons why I ran for office is to make sure the town does not grow bigger. What I mean bigger is no more annexations for residential housing. For example, we just finished our master plan. Within the master plan, there were a number of areas that the Planning Commission had put in that indicated we would annex this land in the future for more residential housing. I argued strenuously, and a lot of those areas were pulled out. One area that was left in is the Dowds Farm. I understand folks in Nottingham are quite concerned about that. Dowds Farm went in there for one reason and one reason only. It was a deal with a developer. The developer gave us a 10-year lease on the Rails to Trails segment, the last segment. In turn, we agreed to put it in the annexation area. Doesn't mean we're going to annex the land, but that was the deal that's made. I would prefer rather using open county grants, open, you know, parks grants, to grab that last segment of Rails to Trails from the developer, because that land is completely useless to him. So, I'm adamant about that. No more annexations for residential development. Now, how do we evolve? Again, as Peter talked about, we evolved by concentrating on infill. I've already talked to you about how I found additional 60,000 gallons of water and had that dedicated towards commercial development and infill. So, that's how we evolved. Other things we've already talked about. We evolved by less regulation, bringing businesses. And then last but not least, the Harrison-Lishir property. The Planning Commission, which I'm the liaison of, right now is doing two different zoning ordinance. One is called MXD. The other's called OPE. OPE is Office Professional. MXD is Mixed Use. MXD, you might think of the rail yard downtown. Lower level becomes businesses. The top level becomes affordable housing. That's an example, perfect example of how we evolved. And I'm helping lead the charge doing MXD, so it'll be much, much easier to help develop our downtown. Thank you.
We've got everybody on that.
I think we went all the way around.
I think we did. Yeah, alright.
Who, who started last time? Was it Jason or Bob?
I started.
He started. He started. Yeah.
Hard question.
We're, we're gonna do-
Advantage going last.
We're gonna do a, a couple of more questions that, that have been submitted, and then we're, we're gonna go to closing statements. But one of the questions that was sent in was specific to where you are with regard to potential expansion of, let's see. What are each of the candidates' position on expanding residential housing specifically in the Nottingham development? And maybe that's a 50-word or less kind of a question. So, in that regard, starting with you, Bob, can you briefly answer that? Can you just go around the table? Since they ask it specific to Nottingham.
Okay, specific to Nottingham, I don't think we need any more half-acre lots with half-million-dollar houses on them. That, that part of the inventory in this town, you have Nottingham, you have Twin Ridge, you have Summit Ridge, you have Village Gate. They all fall within that category. I think we have enough. My children moved away from this town because they can't buy into that as, as kids graduating from college and, and young adults. They can't buy into that. There's almost no place in this town that they can afford to stay.
Nottingham.
Alright. I, I will say, I'm not really sure what's meant by the question. If they're targeting the fact that they don't want to see what's already slated in Nottingham built out, I think the town has an obligation to allow the, the builder to do that. We've seen Carroll County try and stop builders, get sued, and lose. Okay? So, you know, lots have been approved in Nottingham. There's really nothing we can do about that. They're approved in Nottingham, and we, we're really obligated to let the builder keep building them down. If they're looking for, if they're asking, are we going to annex to add to Nottingham? I think I've already said, I, I, that would be growth, and I really don't think we have the infrastructure or the water to support that.
Thanks, Peter. I, I think the question of Nottingham I've already answered, but I'll elaborate a little bit more. I went to the Nottingham HOA meeting, and I heard from many, many residents, they're absolutely adamant that Dowds Farm doesn't go in. The problems are as follows. If Dowds Farm were to be annexed, the developer proposes to drill a hole through an empty lot, put the traffic onto Loxley Lane. I think it's a very bad idea. And then, of course, there are lots of concerns about traffic and, and whatnot. Again, the reason why that, the Dowds Farm went into the master plan is basically a trade. We'll put it in the annexation area. You give, and we'll give you, I'll give you a lease to Rails to Trails. Again, frankly, we don't need that deal. We have the lease for Rails to Trails, which is great. If we want that property, we just go ahead and buy it, because it's useless to the developer. I will also tell you that if the developer tries to develop that land in the county, he's got two problems. Number one, he has to do an access road parallel to Loxley Lane. The preliminary, the preliminary, preliminary look at the county, in other words, he went to the county and said, hey, how would this work out? The county looked at it and said, hmm, we don't think it's a good idea for you to put a parallel entrance right next to the Nottingham entrance. Very unlikely that, that he can develop in the county. Plus, if he develops in the county, at most, he can get seven homes. The reason why he wants to come into the town, A is the road access, B is a higher yield, because he gets access to town water and sewer. I'm adamant that we do not do that. We get Rails to Trails via another mechanism. Thank you.
Referring to the Nottingham development, one of my areas of expertise is where this comes in, and the other incumbents do not know. My son attends Pars Ridge Elementary. In the kindergarten class, there are already seven classes of elementary for kindergarten. That school is starting to become overpopulated, as it is just in kindergarten. And most of those residents for kindergarten, a large portion of them come from Nottingham. The Nottingham residents do not want to see Nottingham become developed with Dobbs' property. The number of houses, however, from what I've heard, has been 40 to 45 houses, and not the seven that Mr. Everett had mentioned. The land is useful to the developer within 40 to 45 houses. However, I do agree with Mr. Everett in that the town should find a way to purchase the portion of land that Rails to Trails is going to be used. That Rails to Trails can be very purposeful for the Nottingham residents. As it is, we in Nottingham are already sort of trapped in that neighborhood. And for people that want to bicycle, or walk their dog, or go on runs, you're essentially running the same lap over and over and over again. You are not dare cross Route 27. The last time I checked, I don't see anyone crossing Route 27. That Rails to Trails is important to the Nottingham residents, and I think it's part of the town's responsibility to try to find a way, a manageable way, to purchase that, that land for Rails to Trails, so that it benefits the Nottingham residents in allowing them access to other parts of the town without that development and adding more additional traffic. Last time I checked, there are two, two to three cars per house, 40 to 45 houses. You do the math. That's a lot of traffic on that road for those, for those residents. Thank you.
Can you start with me, or do we start with Bob?
Started with Bob.
We're all losing track.
I try, I write it down. I keep track of it. Okay, and speaking of Rails to Trails, Mr. Hushour has provided us with, with some questions. I don't know if I'm gonna get all of these in, and you're probably gonna have to take notes, because there's, there's more than one question here. The first question regarding Rails to Trails is, do you support Rails to Trails safely crossing Highway 27 to the 700 families that are east of that highway? So, that's the first one. The second question is, do you support the goal of someday becoming the origin of the Patapsco State Park by connecting to Sykesville with Rails to Trails? Third question is, do you support the acquisition of the CSX property on the Frederick County side of Rails to Trails? And lastly, he's, he's asking for all of this, so I gotta, gotta include it. Since the construction of Rails to Trails is not in the normal scope of our maintenance personnel, would you support occasional overtime hours for town staff to assist volunteers with construction and equipment?
Am I first?
Yes. And if you'd like, I'll pass this around so you can-
Sure. Those are pretty easy. Yes, 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 and yes.
I second. I second.
I will say, I, I, I actually, I will disagree with Jason on one thing. I actually rode my bike across 27 twice this weekend, and up 27. We do need to have a good crossing system there, and Larry and I have talked about it. We, we kind of debate about bridge or tunnel, bridge or tunnel. But somehow, we need to get across 27 there. Connecting all the way down to Sykesville, yes. That's the plan, to continue down that rail line, go all the way, actually into Baltimore. I can tell you that when you get to the end of I-70, you can actually get on the trail there and ride all the way down to Inner Harbor, and then ride all the way around Baltimore. I've, I've done it several times. We want to get down there and meet those trails, so that people can ride distances like that. As far as the CSX property, yes. That is what connects the western side of town to the eastern side of town. That is also probably the easiest part for us to convert to a rail to trail. It's already flat. All we, all we have to do is get access to it, and it's, it's basically almost ready for us to run the paver out there to get going. And that's what really brings all the neighborhoods on that side of town, where Bob lives, where I live, that's what brings us into the town. And when I met with folks from Nottingham the other day, I actually mentioned the fact that, you know, they can see the rail trail over there. And I think some had some concerns that there'll be people on the trail. And I told them, I said, you know, when I look at the front door of my house, I anticipate I'm gonna see this rail trail. I'm not worried about it. Okay? This CSX is what I see out there. And the last question was staff working. Yeah, it's gonna basically become a linear park. So, at some point, I think town staff is going to pick up the maintenance of this. So, it's just part of parks is, you know, is what I'm, you know, now I'm the liaison to Parks and Rec. It's gonna become a linear park. Town staff's gonna be working on it. So, a yes to all those. Very good, Chris.
I won't disagree at all. Of course, I support all of it. I'll tell you how we get there, which I think is more important, crossing Route 27. First of all, the town right now is, is funding a Route 27 corridor study that's being done with planning, with money from the Planning Commission budget. The reason why we're doing the Route 27 corridor study on our own dime is to determine traffic patterns, traffic usage. That's something we can use to leverage the state. Plus, if we decide to go through with Harrison-Lishir, if, because it depends on what the citizens decide, that's yet something else we can leverage to get a crossing from the state over Route 27. My kids go across that to get to their friends in Nottingham. It frightens me to death. So, I, you know, absolutely, I've got a personal interest in protecting my children. Getting a bridge over there, yeah, no question. But those are two examples of how we might do it. The goal of connecting to Sykesville, absolutely. The Dowds Farm is, the Dowds Farm annexation trade for that lease, that's the next step. Again, we've already discussed, we could just buy that land instead of doing an annexation there. CSX property, which is on the far side, as, as Peter mentioned, we have a way to negotiate with CSX. CSX owns the property. Initially, CSX came back to the town with some exorbitant amount of money that they wanted to, wanted us to pay for. Land that's completely useless to them. There are some environmental issues there. We can negotiate the, the CSX down on the environmental issues, because our town staff could take care of the work. So, that's one way we can acquire that property, very reasonable from CSX. And then finally, the Rails to Trails segments, they're being deeded to the town. One of the issues I was involved in was with one of the townhouse associations, helping the mayor and, and Larry Hushour, who runs our Rails to Trails program, convincing the residents that to deed the land to the town. So, of course, we'll maintain it, because the property is actually being deeded and is owned by the town. So, I'm a big supporter of Rails to Trails.
Thanks, Chris. Rails to Trails, yes. Crossing Route 27, Larry has mentioned to the councilman, as, as well as myself, the other day, when he took Nottingham residents on a little field trip to Rails to Trails, that crossing Route 27 will be available for a state funding or state grant, per se. And whether that's a bridge going over or a tunnel going under, it, it seemed like he had a pretty good idea that the, the tunnel going under is kind of already there with the, with the water line and going under 27. And I'm, I'm totally for that. There is no access for those residents on the- There is no access for those residents on the east side of town to go to Watkins Park at all without driving. Yes to the Patapsco State Park. CSX, if we're able to convince them that, that land is going to be more useful to the town rather than to them, I'm totally for that. I'm also for support in any upkeep of those rails and trails that's going to be deeded to the town, definitely. As far as crossing Route 27, I think the residents on the east side need to have a little input as far as what is the best way to do that. So meeting with the local HOAs and talking to those residents, that's going to be directly impacted in crossing Route 27. I think we need to get a little bit more support and, and have them share their views. And how is the best way, would they like to see a bridge or would they like to see a tunnel? I, I think getting their input is, is very important. And I think the reason why you haven't been hit is because I, you're a lawyer, sir, and no one wants to hit you because they'll be in deep, deep trouble.
Or the opposite could be true.
Or the opposite. And Mr. Everett mentioned the, the traffic study, which is actually costing the town $75,000 to conduct. And in, in developing the town, the last time I checked, that each of those intersections already has a traffic light. I'm not sure what else needs to be done for that, for that traffic study. Thank you.
Well, I think I'm going to make it unanimous here. It's yes, 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 and yes. The, the Route 27 crossing, when my wife and I were dating a very long time ago, there's a, there's a place down in Montgomery County called Beach Drive. And there's a trail that runs along Beach Drive and goes all the way to the, to the zoo, to the National Zoo. And we would ride our bicycles regularly to the National Zoo. There's a tunnel under Connecticut Avenue there, and the tunnel works very well. And I can't imagine trying to carry a bicycle up over a bridge or me carrying mine and my wife's bicycle up over a bridge because she ain't going to do that. Yeah, I think, and I think connecting up with Patapsco Park is a great idea. I, I get the opportunity, being a Facebook friend of Peter's, and Peter's one of those guys that takes his bike out and rides it anywhere. And he'll be showing us western Maryland where he's rode for 34 miles, you know, and has lunch in the 34 miles back. Now, I don't particularly do that. I, I would rather play golf. I could probably hit a little ball on a Saturday afternoon, 34 miles. But there, there are people, there are people that want to do that. Do I support buying the Frederick County side, yes, for the right price, not the price they're asking for. That will, that'll be the debate. And do I support staff to help? I am amazed by Larry's army and how far they've gotten, okay? And if they need a little bit of staff help, I think we could provide that. Thank you.
Larry's in the Navy.
Huh?
Navy.
Well, okay.
Seabees.
He's been Larry's army for about three years now.
Okay, one last question before we get to your closing statements. We've just completed and adopted an updated town master plan. It contains a grand vision and quite a few different goals of various components. Looking out over the next eight to 10 years and beyond, what do you consider to be Mount Airy's greatest opportunities? And what do you consider to be its most pressing needs? What initiatives can the council take in support of accomplishing those opportunities as well as meeting and filling the needs? And Mr. Everett, I think you get to kick that off.
Can I, can I ask if, do we repeat that question again? I can't write that fast.
Yep, yep. We've just completed and adopted a town master plan. It has a vision and several goals and components. Looking out over the next eight to 10 years, we had this asked in different timeframes for some folks who wrote in and asked about one to five. The plan was written to be over eight to 10, so I'm going to ask it in terms of the longer period. Looking out over the next eight to 10 years, what do you consider to be Mount Airy's greatest opportunities as well as its most pressing needs? And from you, from the standpoint of you being on the council, what initiatives can the council take to support both accomplishing the opportunities and meeting and filling those needs?
So, master plan, master plan's complete. Again, I alluded to the traffic study. The traffic study, corridor study, Route 27, isn't merely an expenditure of $75,000 to tell us something we already know. That traffic study is a linchpin of the master plan. It will tell us how traffic will flow from the surrounding collector roads onto 27. It will tell us the costs and things that we need to do to make sure if we grow our commercial base, we don't end up in a traffic nightmare. Nobody wants that. Traffic study is extremely important to initiating the master plan. Some of the opportunities in front of us, we've actually discussed, I think, most of them. The community center, rails to trails, economic development, police protection, water. We've discussed many of those. And I, I think we've given a lot of really good answers about how we get there. If I were to look out, look out eight to 10 years from now, I really want to concentrate on infill and our commercial growth. And again, we've already discussed some of those areas. Where do we get water? How do we preserve water for commercial growth? How do we work with the counties? I've already reached out to Carroll County. We do need to reach out to Frederick County, too, from an economic development standpoint, get them to help us with county money, with state money, teach us with their staff, with their expertise and how we, we take concrete steps to do that. Trying to think. I, I think that's the, you know, in the short term, again, one of the biggest challenges I see right now, and in order to make the economic growth in the future of the town work, is we've got to get the financial house in order. We're in great shape financially. We've got to establish a policy for rainy day reserves, a policy for operating capital, and that will tell us how much money we have left. Then the citizens will decide, do we do a community center? Do we do Center Street? Do we do more rails to trails? That is critical to our health and well-being moving forward into the future. We haven't yet done that. I will continue to push that. I started the effort a few months ago. Oh, no, it's not, thank you.
A very complicated question, hopefully a very simple answer. Some of the greatest opportunities that we already have, looking forward, is bringing Mackenzie the caboose down to Main Street, allowing our residents that access. Developing Flatiron Building, that is a great opportunity that's been sitting there. It's been on the budget, or excuse me, the agenda for, for many years. We need to get that developed, take care of beautifying downtown Mount Airy, which is already beautiful, but we can, we can do some more. As far as some of the needs, I think some of the residents tonight and Mr. Butts have brought up some, some great concerns that affect our town. And hopefully, with us trying to address them without necessarily having a formal meeting, they can continue to be addressed and, and brought forth. There needs to be some, some planning that needs to, to go on with that. But I think you got the residents and the people that have asked questions have, have kind of brought, brought forth those needs. And as far as what I can do, if I'm elected town council, is meeting with local HOAs, going out to the town, meeting the residents, and, and talking to them and figuring out what they would like to see. Yes, a survey has been done 2008 and 2012. We kind of already have a general idea what our residents are looking for. But those views change, you know, year after year, those views change for those residents. In order to get the most up-to-date view, we need to go out and, and talk with our residents and provide them with the most up-to-date information. Thank you.
I, I think some of our most pressing needs from, from our, our master plan is to, is to try to somehow deal with the pressure of the counties around us. Frederick County is building amounts to 10,000 homes between here and Urbana, 30,000 homes. It's three Mount Arys between here and Urbana. And, you know, that's, that's the county's decision, but they're really not taking Mount Airy into, into consideration what they do, when they do that. I, I'm, I'm our Frederick County representative to the Maryland Municipal League. I also am the liaison to the Frederick County Council, and we meet regularly with Jan Gardner, the executive over there. And what we're trying to do is in Carroll County, we, we have much better communication with the, with the Board of County Commissioners and with the different planning departments and all that kind of stuff. And we, in fact, there's some, there's some meetings that are coming up soon with Mr. Butts and the Planning Commission and the planning people from Carroll County. We'd like to try to do the same thing in Frederick County, just so that they can be aware of what our concerns are with the development of Frederick County. So, and, and I think we, we saw some things at the last Planning Commission meeting where they were calling Prospect Road a collector road. I don't think they plan on collecting, say, into downtown onto Main Street, but they certainly are using, are using Rising Ridge Road as, as a collector avenue to get people out of the Lingor area and out onto 70 where they want to go. So, you know, I, I think setting up these, or having these relationships with the different counties will help us a lot in that way.
Okay. Good.
Where am I going, Peter?
It's coming to me. All right. Needs and opportunities. I'm one who tends to think that, you know, government should stick pretty much to its essentials. So from that perspective, I think our big needs are water, police, and watching out for what's going on on our outer growth boundaries. Obviously, water's essential to life. It's one of those essential functions that the town has to provide. We've already discussed water here tonight, so we need to stick to that. Another one is police. That is an essential government function. It's not one of those optional items, as we can see in Baltimore right now. We need to have a good police force. Policing is essential to the town, so I think we need to do that. Another issue that Councilman King brought up is, is our growth areas. We need to be involved with the counties to at least do the best we can to see that what they build on our boundaries does not affect us in a detrimental way. Now, moving on over to opportunities. I think our biggest opportunity is down here in this downtown area. I think we've got a beautiful rail yard with a beautiful train station. We've got a nice bank building down here at the end of the row. There are plans to develop all this. We need to get it done. In order to get that done, we're going to need water. We're also going to need zoning and everything to work together. We've worked on some zoning. We now have a downtown zone. When I started on the council, we didn't have a downtown zone down here to make it easy for those things to take place. We have that now. We're working on getting them the water they need. We need to help these developers. We need to build out this downtown. I think that's probably our greatest opportunity, would be the rail yard and the old bank. And Bill?
Great, great. All right, we've touched on a lot of topics, a lot of current issues. You've done a superb job with your comments. We're going to give you the chance to make a closing statement at this point, okay? And Jason, I believe you get to, to lead off, and this will also be a, a two-minute cap on it.
I feel like I keep going first.
Actually, it rotates.
We all feel like that.
I'm going to, I'm going to keep it pretty short. I feel like what I've spoken with on tonight's questions and issues, I, I don't think I need to reiterate. Bringing economic growth to the town without developing residentially, supporting our town residents, looking to make sure that we make the best decisions financially for the town and still supporting them and making sure that they have the needs that they have every day, keeping our small-town feel without developing outwards, and just making sure that our reserve stays intact, but also make sure that our residents are taken care of as well. Thank you.
We, we have lots of issues in town that are tied together. The Flatiron Building, the Community Center, the Arts Alliance, the Rails to Trails, and the Mount Airy Caboose. All of these things are happening at the same time. We have, we have commissions that are working on this stuff, and, and they're going to provide us with their reports soon. And then we're going to come to you guys and say, what is it that you want? Okay? Because you're the ones that are paying for it. So that, that's where we'll be with that. We're also going to have our, we're going to have to look at our opportunities with the, with the police department. Can we increase the community policing by going to our own police department? I think we need some advice, advice along that way. And, you know, I'd love to sit here and tell you about all my accomplishments I've, I've had since moving to Mount Airy. And the truth is, I haven't accomplished one thing. Not one single thing, okay? The acts that are credited to me are really the achievements of groups of people, this town council being one of them. The groups of people that share the same vision. The town council changed the way they were interacting with each other, and who knew it? Who knew that it was here? But we're, we're at a point where we're getting so much done, the respect that we have for each other at this table is amazing. Gentlemen, thank you. And, and thanks to Bill and Pat for allowing us to address, address the many issues discussed tonight. Thanks to CMC and mostly to the citizens that show up here and, and put the pressure on us and, and find out what it is that we stand for and what it is that will be. Make sure to vote on May the 4th. It's the most important thing you can do. Thank you.
All right. Well, first, thank you for listening tonight. And Bill, I want to thank you for your excellent job as moderator. Thank you very much. Now, I know everyone's tired, so I'm going to be very brief. When you vote next week, keep it simple. Do you like keeping your money? Do you think this is a great town? If so, then I think I'm the right candidate for you. I have proven leadership, and how the government should be run can be seen in the way it runs now. Governments don't get smaller, they only get bigger, and the taxes grow. If you want to keep us small, efficient, and cheap, then I'm your candidate. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Much has changed since you elected me three years ago as one of your town councilmen. And the positive changes you see today are exactly what I had hoped for. My opening statement was, I thought you were going to find that all the candidates here basically agreed on everything, maybe some differences here and there, and I think that's true. We've all basically agreed upon the same thing. I think experience is very important. So for my part this evening, I've given you examples of how I would accomplish several things. We've talked community center. I figured out a way to do it for free to start the program. Rails to trails, we've talked a couple different ways on how we might do that, saving tax money. Economic development, we've talked about that extensively, including the new OPE MXD zoning. We talked about police protection, what we would do, water, rails to trails. I'm concerned, again, that our financial reserves are still too high. And if you would vote for me in the next term, I'll continue to work at the council to make sure that we establish baselines, and then we know what we can afford moving forward. That's absolutely critical. All of us in Mount Airy, we pride ourselves in our small-town community values. My wife Jane and I are thrilled to be raising our kids in this community, Patrick, Ryan, and Elizabeth. I can't think of no better place to, to live. And that's one of the reasons why I'm running. The last thing I'll, I'll say this evening is, I've, as you could tell this evening, I formed a pretty strong bond with Peter Helt and, and Bob King. And I think the town's moving forward in a very positive direction. The three of us, if you watch council meetings, will debate vigorously, and we disagree on a lot of things. But when the meeting's over, the town moves forward in a positive direction. I've learned a lot from them. I know they've learned a lot from me. I would ask, actually, not only do you vote for me, but you vote for Peter Helt and for Bob King, because I believe the three of us are best qualified to continue to move the town forward in the direction that's currently moving. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thanks, Chris.
On behalf of the town of Mount Airy, I want to sincerely thank each of the candidates. We really, really appreciate that you're willing to run. We appreciate you're willing to serve. Our town is the better for it. We want to thank the Carroll Media Center. If it wasn't for them and, and their effort, we wouldn't be able to broadcast this, we wouldn't be able to convey this out to our residents. We want to thank those of you who attended tonight and those that are watching on cable. And I want to remind you that there's going to be replay of this forum on cable channel 19 on three occasions. Tomorrow, Wednesday evening at 8:00 PM, again on Friday at 8:00 PM, and then finally on Sunday at 6:00 PM. It's also going to be available for viewing on the CMC's website at www.carrollmediacenter.org. And then the only thing that's left is to come out and vote on May the 4th, Monday. And please encourage your friends and your neighbors. We're a better town because we stay involved. Thank you so much for attending. Let's give these candidates a round of applause. Everyone, good night. Thanks again. Thanks again.